Yeah, five thirty guys, let's stand for the pledge.
Benny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Here.
Brenda Simmons. Greg Scott.
Here.
We're with the agenda, any additions or corrections?
There, I don't have any.
And then three public comment, public comment in the room on agenda items only. Public comment on the phone? This is an agenda item? Come on up, sir. You'll have three minutes. You got the floor.
Good evening, my name is Phil Durst, I'm representing the Oklahoma County EDC. I understand the budget that there's no dollars budget for EDC and I would just ask that it be something budget. See, realize that we funded, I just asked for partial funding at any level. The reason for that, because when we go to townships, we'll go to anybody and say, will you help us fund this? They say is accounting in. At this point, I would have to say, no, the county is not in, the county is divested. Makes it very difficult for us to continue, very difficult for us to raise other funds. If the county is not in at some level, at some level, and that is why I ask, is it some level? That the county be invested in economic development, Oklahoma County.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Any other public comments in the room? Any public comment on the phone? And for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty four budget draft? Tim?
I'll walk through the handouts that you had there tonight, just the update from our last meetings. Top page is the totals, we'll come back to that in a second. The next page should be the border commissioners budget, you'd asked for the per DM line, the office supply line and the training line to be reduced to zero. So you see that on that page. The next page is the sheriff's office, general fund budget, but very last line, the vehicles, the sixty five thousand is removed. On the next page, planning and zoning, a couple of things, draw your attention first to the bottom, that last line to transfer to the MSU extension fund. We reduce that to zero, we put that into the building inspection fund, which we'll come to in a second. Very top line, I talked with Ryan after the meeting last week. He suggested, and this makes sense, of taking that address ordinance or enforcement of it, really the signing of addresses and assign it to his office. Because his office is the first one to receive any kind of a permit, any kind of a land use permit. It would make sense for him to issue the address as he's issuing the land use permit. So if you're agreeable to that, that revenue would be reported now in the planning and zoning rather than being an orphan, single activity line item elsewhere in the budget. That may require some follow up with your meeting, we're going to look at the ordinance to make sure that everything is directed properly in the ordinance. The next page is the general appropriations. Sixth line down is the appropriation for EDC. And at the last meeting, that's where it was discussed that they reduce to zero, and that's what you see there. And then finally, that last page is the building inspection fund. And you see the transfer off the MSU extension fund is increased to fifteen thousands. Now, that very top page that you had is the summary page for all of the general fund. With those changes, revenue over expenditure total of one hundred forty six thousand one hundred twelve dollars. Since this has been printed, I've had a couple of other meetings, the first, I had a meeting with the sheriff and junior sheriff this afternoon. They gone through is their line items and then this addition of this, you'll see the following changes in the revenue side. We've got one line that's, in fact, we can even follow along because we have that in here. The first one is the line, the very top, the marijuana licensing fees line. We'll be able to add two thousand dollars in revenue there based on some activities establishing the new businesses that are within the counties. That is a conservative number, but the two thousand, the sheriff felt was incredible number that we could work with. Moving down about the center of that revenue side, you'll see the fingerprint revenue in the sheriff's department. We'll be adding nine hundred dollars to that revenue line in recognition of a fee increase. And then sheriff's services, which is next line down, with that number, we would increase another five thousand dollars because again of some fee increases. So that's a total revenue increase of seventy nine hundred. In the larger packets that you see or that we had issued from the last meeting under probate. Probate court administrator was in this morning, they've gotten some updated numbers on the probate judge reimbursement and the probate judge salaries. And these are numbers coming from the state, so first, on the expenditure side, the probate judge salary actually increases seven thousand five hundred two dollars, which also means the accompanying social security line will increase another four hundred dollars. However, the state will reimburse for all of the social security and all of the incomes of the judges' salary. And actually will have a total increase over what was shown in the revenue. And the prior edition was a total increase being twenty thousand three hundred thirty two dollars. So an overall surplus on those two transactions of twelve thousand four thirty. So we would add another twenty thousand three thirty to that total revenue line on the top of the handout that you saw here, sir. Total right now of revenues over expenditures, seriously, it's one hundred fifty eight thousand five hundred forty two. Earlier today, that first thing this morning, I received an email from our insurance carrier about their rates for the coming year, and they're going to increase. The numbers however, that they presented in their materials this morning were challenged and they're being recalculated. They were significantly higher because they were counting the number of our employees who are classified as law enforcement, and they were also taking all about ten of our seasonal part timers and they assumed they were full time employees. Along with another part timer, it increased our rate considerably based on that. So I talked to Dan Elliott over at Devo. He said, no, this isn't right, he had gotten hold of the carrier already today, they're going to make those adjustments downward, so I don't have an accurate bill yet to calculate. However, you rest assured, the increase will happen in our insurance, liability insurance. It will likely be under fifty thousand, but an increase nevertheless. The other component that's causing the increase, we added vehicles to our fleet this last year and they're brand new vehicles. And so those are going to be more expensive to insure in terms of the fleet. That's both, I think, a couple of patrol vehicles that we purchased and the new bus that we have purchased as well. I think we had another new vehicle that came on this last year out of transit. So that's why those are going to go up. And then finally, another increase that we're seeing has to do with our policies and practices. That's where any of the lawsuits that we have to deal with throughout the year are tallied and the experience that we've had this past year, that line will go up as well. So that's the rationale behind why those increases are going to happen, but it's vastly improved from what it was first thing this morning. Thankfully, we're able to look and correct that error on the number of law enforcement officers that we have. So that's the latest I have.
Comments, commissioners?
Yeah, I have a comment here. And I'm not a budget person. I looked at this thing from nine thirty twenty twenty three. And it says senior taxes and health department taxes is, still got their taxes in here, so they, we still have their money, they don't have it?
I don't know that we've collected it though.
Commissioner Anning is just a pass through.
I know, but what I'm saying.
It shows a revenue and an expense under your appropriation. In and out, right of merge.
But this is available here, six hundred ninety eight thousand.
If you look at appropriations, it's where the expense will go out. And that gets booked by the auditors at the end of the year.
So it's still in here.
Yeah. We pay them every ten days, the money we collected for them goes out, but that's on the winter bill, not on the summer bill. So right now, we're not holding funds for them.
We're not, we don't have any funds for them?
At this time, no, because there is a winter bill collection.
Oh, we haven't collected it yet. Right, I was just curious.
It's just a pass through, money in, money out.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
Other questions?
You're telling me this is a balanced budget then?
And you have a surplus revenues over expenditures in one hundred fifty two, sorry, one hundred fifty eight thousand.
What's the big difference between last year and this year?
What's the big difference? Well, we've gone through and this budget still includes the reductions in staff that we talked about. Everything else that we've gone through.
What reductions is that? Could you refresh my memory?
I will do my best. We had a reduction of five correction officers and three of our lowest seniority deputies. That came as a result of moving one lieutenant position over to the road patrol mileage fund and then moving that state road patrol grant officer over to the road patrol mileage fund.
Okay, if we reduce the the jail by five, how are they going to operate? In their full staff right now, how are they going to operate with five less people?
Again, the philosophy being we're staffed up for one hundred forty four beds right now, if you're only going to fill between fifty and seventy. Inducing the staff to reflect the actual numbers that we have housed in the jail versus the maximum number we could have.
Okay, and how's that affect our liability if the state says one thing and we're doing something else?
I actually asked about that with the insurance carrier when I had them on the phone today, and they said as far as the insurance carrier is concerned, it won't have an impact. In fact, it will reduce the total bill because we have that many fewer corrections officers that are listed as our listed on our law enforcement line. He did point out that if there were lawsuits, that comes back to that policies and practices line. If there were lawsuits, that was a risk issue that we had discussed last time. But that's if, if and when any kind of a suit were to come along, that's where we would see the increase. But you would see that regardless of any lawsuit that comes in, that's where it lands.
So you're transferring a lieutenant over into the sheriff's department and getting this, this laying off three lower ranking deputies, is that correct?
Right.
And how are we going to be able to function for road patrol then?
I don't believe it will. I mean, there'll be fewer different faces on there, but ultimately, when you take that lieutenant position, that road patrol grant position, and then we're also moving a quarter of the two school resource officers over there for when they're not at school, they all, the bottom line difference is a half a FTE.
FTE.
A full time equivalent.
Okay. So I just don't understand how road control, I mean, I by replacing three road patrol with one individual, I can't imagine it wouldn't affect road patrol.
I defer to the sheriff in terms of exactly how they would schedule that and what kind of assignments there would be.
Then, correct, Sheriff?
Can we come up?
Please. Hey, guys.
I'm sorry. I want to throw something out here for you folks. Based on the information that we received from eighty seventh district court. You all, I think, got this chart.
Yep.
The, the upswing, the trend that we seen here is the drug caseload trend is up. If you go down, it, it shows that the, the drugs and the drunk driving case load is up. After, after it extends, extend a period of conversation with the undersheriff. We're willing to put it in interdiction patrol vehicle. We'll tackle this problem that we're having in our county. We want to, we want to target these violations. We want to stop the drugs from coming into our colony. What I'd like to do is, is assign that patrol unit to tackle these, this big huge problem that we have. We pretty much know the, the roots that are coming in here. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say where they're at because that's, that's part of the patrol techniques that we've got that going on, but we're willing to do that. But it, it's going to, it's going to require us to reconstruct our pro patrol units, we've got Tahos. We're going to have to have probably a charger so we can, so we can make this happen. We've got to have the right proper tools to do it. We may send this individual that's going to be assigned to this position to school to learn the techniques of this, things to look for. We're willing to do that. Just to get some activity out there. And then, and at the same time, we're going to stop the drugs from coming in, coming into our colony.
Is there any way you can swap a Tahoe out for a, for a car?
Don't believe so. I don't believe so.
We can't turn the clock back.
The big, you know, the, the biggest, the biggest issue we have with the Tahos, you know, they're, they're, they're not, they're not.
I know.
You, you know, you understand. We got to get around quickly, smoothly, the Tahos ain't built for for this type of patrol that we're, we want to focus on.
Questions?
Want to put an interdiction car out there, you don't have one to put out there, is what you're telling us?
No, I don't.
We can't afford a new one, there's no questions asked.
We don't, we don't have the money.
You know.
I wish we did.
Well, we will get a replacement, we'll get an insurance payout for the damaged patrol car. Between that payout and then still selling the jet skis and those two extra Fords. We should at least be able to get that one charter replaced that was damaged in the, in the crash.
Are you, are you talking about using that grant?
No, this is, this is the insurance, so there's an insurance.
Right.
Pending right now on the car, so we'll get the money for the insurance or the damaged equipment, that type of stuff. Take that money, plus the sales of the jet skis and the two Fords that are outdated and are locked, combine that all together and get the replacement charger for the damaged one.
You got to be enough money?
I sure hope so.
How many miles was on that car that got crashed?
Not many.
Fifty four.
So not many.
Twenty twenty one. Fifty four thousand.
It should have some value.
It should be value, and I'm not sure exactly how much of our equipment's going to be salvageable, but we're, we're meeting with the adjuster here shortly. Supposed to be scheduled, be kind of the next couple of days, we're going to go through it and add, you know, moving it, equipment that we can salvage out of it to transfer over. Replacement for damaged equipment plus the vehicle itself.
What about, you guys are all thirty five hours, correct?
Yeah.
What about, you guys each have a secretary in the corrections and in the, in the sheriff's office, correct? Are they forty hours or are they thirty five hours? What about taking them down to thirty five? Is that possible? I don't know what the savings would be, I don't know.
It's still be full time. Yeah, that's good.
Hey.
But it saves.
It might save a job.
It could save a job.
Likely require a lot of understanding with the unions because those contracts are both standing forty hours.
Yeah.
All right.
The union, you have to agree to it.
Yeah, it's actually corrections contract for both of them, so, yeah, just one.
Yeah, it'll be changed, we already used contract covers.
So this, this balanced budget that we're looking at here with only a, a difference of one hundred forty six thousand is with all these cuts?
One hundred forty six is surplus.
Surplus, right.
One hundred forty six thousand, correct, but that's with the cuts that we're talking about, right?
Yeah, current ones, yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So this interdiction control vehicle, then, what, what type of revenue are you thinking that that will produce?
I, I can't answer that. I don't know.
Will it produce revenue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that's the whole.
Well, I mean, we.
I mean, we didn't get rid of the drugs.
We didn't hear that, we.
Yeah.
We only heard another car. The object, the object. Up here because Brenda wanted to know how you're going to operate with laps, and then all we've heard is operating with more.
So, yeah, you can't. Yes, there will be revenue associated with that, we, addressing the problem that, that plagues our colony, which is drugs and also operating under the influence of drugs. By addressing that problem leads to arrests and cases that go through district court. So as we increase our activity to address the needs of the community, which is this drug related issue that's, that's strong out there, you will see an increase in district and circuit court cases, which you trans, transfers into, translates into revenue. The exact number depends on how how good we address the issue with the drugs and who you're encountering and that type of thing. Or that, you know. That's what we're talking about.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So then, at our last budget meeting, and while you're, you weren't here of course, and sheriff was waiting to talk to you. You know, one conversation we had, and we spent some time on it, was the possibility of putting a patrol car on seventy five. Something you guys decided that not willing to look at.
The drug addiction car would be I think more effective use of that type of thing.
That area.
Yeah, and I seventy five.
I'm thirty three.
No, yeah, I just don't want to go down that path.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
I drove down to Pinconning today three times. That means I have to go through three counties to get there and down seventy five, and you know what? Aronak County didn't have a car out there, Bay County didn't have a car out there. I drive down the South Line to see my, my son. There's no, what is it, what is it with Oklahoma? Oklahoma is the only county out of eighty three that makes, makes money on a freeway. Because if it's such a grand plan, why isn't everybody doing it?
First off, we haven't done it in.
Well, even, neither, neither has any other county done it in all this time. They didn't do it when we did it before.
We don't, we don't know that for sure, you're making an assumption, hey, and you're making an assumption.
Well, you know, that's my job is to make this.
You're correct, go ahead, Commissioner Wiltsey.
So you're assuming based off of your drive down to Pinconning today and not seeing a sheriff car on I seventy five, they don't generate any money off tickets on I seventy five, is that what you're going on?
No, I mean, setting cars out there for exactly to raise money. Not, we're not even talking about the, the curb crime, we're talking about the initial, the, the reason why we're doing it is to make money.
Well, I agree on that to a point.
Well, that's the result, you know. And, but that's what you want them to do, you don't want them to just go out there and fight crime, slow people down, you want them to make money. That's, that's, you're saying it right on the record, you want them to make money.
But we have.
So you don't want them to give them warnings. You want them to write tickets.
They've given warnings.
Hold on, Commissioner Simmons.
Well.
We have, I, I will wait till Commissioner Scott.
Go ahead.
We have two choices here, we either have to look at ways of making money or we have to cut people's livelihoods.
Well, we've, we've talked about this different ways. Do we have a revenue problem or do we have an expenditure problem?
Both.
Yeah, well, how are the other counties doing? How it's eighty, eighty two other counties don't go out on the freeway to make money. Okay?
I'd say they're going out there to fight crime. He's, he's addressing me.
Commissioner Wiltsey, do you have something?
Well, I mean, I think to go along with the, the interdiction control vehicle, I mean, I totally, I, I think this is, you know, something that is a really good idea. But you know, yes, we talk about making revenue off of writing tickets on I seventy five, but it's, it's more than just the revenue. I mean, also, I don't know what the percentage is, but I would imagine a lot of the people that are getting pulled over on I seventy five also have drugs in their vehicle. So it's more than just out there looking to write tickets for speeding. We know it's obviously the main corridor for, you know, drugs move from south to north. So, I mean, I think you're also a little, there's, there's more vision on it than just revenue for speeding tickets.
Well, in three meetings, I've heard commissioners asking the sheriff to put a car out there to make money. Okay, nobody said to, nobody has said to the sheriff, hey sheriff, I think there's a drug problem out on the freeway, and I think we ought to really take a look at it. No, what we have said publicly on the record is we want you to go out and make money. You know, and this is, this is, I'm just saying that nobody else does.
You're telling, are you done, Commissioner Scott?
I, I, all, all I want to say is I'm, I am glad that the sheriff has had this, this way up to this point at least. I'm done.
Yes, go ahead, Sheriff.
My intentions behind all this is to fight drugs. Drugs on the street that are coming in, they're, they're, they're drug trafficking into our communities, it's happening. We're dealing with drug addicts on a daily basis, we're dealing with these people. I want to cut that down, I'm not going to sign nobody die seventy five. I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave it up to the, to the individual that's going to perform his duty, knowing where these drugs are coming from, I'm going to let him circle the county where he feels that it, that it's coming in, that's where I want him targeting at. I'm not going to tell him to sit out there for twelve hours, I'm not going to do that. My, my main concern is drugs coming into our communities. And it's, it's, it's pretty bad.
I agree.
It's bad, and so I mean, that, that that, I'm just throwing the idea out there. It will, it will create some activity. And but we'll do exactly what we need to do to get the drugs out the streets.
Tim, does this have decrease in the hours, you had, you had mentioned decrease in the medical services in the jail by twenty hours?
Right, to not support the extra added nurse that we had in our contract.
Is that in here?
Yes, that reduction is in here.
I want, where was, where would I see that at, or wouldn't I not see that?
There is a line on the jail budget that you might see it, I pointed it out on the summary page, it moved out last time.
Okay, so it's not on any of this information for today?
No, not on the stuff that was handed out today, it's, it's a sheet from last week.
With, with less, with less inmates and, and you guys don't do the warrants anymore at the sheriffs because the previous secretary did, correct? But the war, uh, warrants, did the, did the previous secretary used to do those? Who used to do the warrants? Uh, now nine one one does, does them.
Better in the warrants.
Yeah.
You're talking about the lanes.
Okay.
Well, nine one one's been doing that for a few years.
My question is, 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 could both your secretaries, and I don't know the answer to this, you do, function with thirty five hours per week?
I'm going to say no, and the reason why I say no is because it'll be deduction in the services when people call our office and, and nobody's answering that phone. That, that's huge, you know, as well as I do, if you call somewhere, you expect somebody to answer the phone, it'll give you some direction. And if them individuals aren't there, that puts a bad taste in people's mouths. And then we've got this, we've got this millage that we need to pass, and if we don't give this service to the people that are asking for our services. We're not, we're not doing the job.
And what hours, what hours are they there?
All right, go ahead, Tim.
I'm going to point out the corrections secretary serves a dual role, she's also corrections officer.
Exactly.
They were able to use that secretary in both of those capacities, and so to reduce that one to thirty five would be difficult because your corrections officers, the shifts they work. They need that, that forty hours.
Okay.
Yeah, she plays a dual role and she does, she does a very nice job for us, and she's there, we need her.
Understandable, just looking for something here versus cutting people, totally. Go ahead.
But, you know, if they want somebody to answer, and there's a crisis going on, I usually call nine one one.
But, you know, if they want somebody to answer, and there's a crisis going on, I usually call nine one one.
There's, there's a lot of other information that you're trying to gather out of us. The attorneys call us. I mean, we get several, several, several.
Well, they know the hours are from this point to this point. They would know to call between those hours.
Our hours are eight to, eight to four thirty right now. Maybe fifty two weeks or you know, so much of them stay five hours, seventy eight, eighty or a week. About four thousand hour.
You say thousands.
Well, I just.
I don't have that in front of me.
Right, I'm just looking at the contract, so I wait for the office.
Any other ideas, guys? Thanks, guys.
Um, you want to hear on the medical contract? I know Tina's here for her medical service. She's got something to move.
I don't look.
At least that, okay, to hand out where she can talk during the.
All right.
Comment.
You guys.
Well, I just wanted to throw out some suggestions with who's in my staff.
Oh, go ahead.
The impact.
I'm sorry.
In other directions.
Decreasing the staffing?
Right now, there's four on each shift. If somebody's off, I don't fill that spot. It was not covered with overtime. They drop it back to three a shift. Every time somebody takes a vacation day, I have to have it filled because I can't, they can't leave. I mean, here's some of the overtime, like an overtime list. These, the highlighted ones, both these shifts were short, so every time somebody takes a vacation, I have to fill it. On days that were fully shifted, this happened because one guy went from nights to days. And it crossed, he crossed them. But I don't fill any of these shifts with overtime. I run with one down. But if the staffs are their minimum, it's going to be overtime. Well, everything's going to be overtime. This packet right here, this was August transports that they have done, and that's going to be all overtime because there's nobody working transport anymore. This will be all overtime. I figured up some stat, overtime transport works about forty one hundred and sixty hours a year. About the equivalent of two full-time officers would return into overtime because there's going to be somebody that's not working. But it's still full time because the transport has to be cut first. And then staff earns two hundred and sixty hours of PTO a year. So if they take that off, all of them hours are going to be overtime. If you add up that with just the staff that's left, cutting them five, that's about thirty five hundred and eighty four hours of PTO. You add them together, it's seventy four or seventy seven hundred and forty four. Add a base rate of thirty dollars an hour because it's all covered with overtime. It's about two hundred and thirty two thousand. Not to mention, staff is going to get burned out. Because when they take a vacation, then they got to work somebody else's vacation. You won't be able to get out of there for a week without making enough cover in somebody else.
Go ahead.
With transport also, they're just paid for the hours they work. They're not paid while they're on.
Right, they get sixty dollars an hour.
Full time, they don't get benefits, they don't get overtime. They only work. So they'd be switching from that to a lot of overtime. Just thought.
Thank you. I, I think it's your email. I, I, I worked and.
I know.
I worked today. It's, it's been a busy week.
Yeah. He told us it was four in the daytime, three at night. Four on each shift.
Yep.
There was three on this. This is, I was down four officers when I took over. These guys are both only three, so every time somebody takes a day off, I have to fill it. They have to have them.
But you told us right in the meeting, it was four and three.
No, I didn't.
No.
Then I had twenty three officers over there.
All right. Okay.
Would you allow Tina to?
Yeah, 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 go ahead. Hi, you know, those, those of you that don't know me, my name's Bina Damod. I run T M D correctional services over at the jail. I took over on October first of twenty twenty one. Um, I put together some numbers and I apologize that you guys are just getting this now. I was not aware that um medical hours were going to be cut till two hours before your meeting on Wednesday. So um I apologize for that, but here's some numbers for you. Um, basically, um, at this point, if you need to reduce the medical hours from sixty to forty, um, we right now inmates are seen within twelve hours of coming in. Um, that's something that we pride ourselves on to see them. Um, if you reduce our hours to forty hours a week, it can be twenty four, seventy two hours before an inmate is seen. Um, this is pretty critical, especially if we have inmates on medications such as heart medications, blood pressure medication.
I read that.
Um, diabetes, psychological meds. Um, there's a process when an inmate comes in. It's quite a lengthy process. Um, we have to send the information to their either physician um or pharmacy to get um their medications to show that they are actually on the meds that they're telling us. Once that comes back, that's sent to our physician for his approval. Then that the medications are ordered, med, um, a med sheet's filled out, their medications are set up. Um, this is, if you reduce us, this is increasing the chances of these individuals coming in um having a hypertension, crisis, high blood pressure, blood sugar issues, um, which would result in more trips to the ER, um, because there's not going to be medical staff there. Um, also, I feel that there's definitely going to be an increase in emergency room visitors. The officers are not qualified as medical staff to assess the, assess the inmates. Um, and therefore that officer will have no other choice but to call an ambulance and take that individual into the ER. Um, practice, um lieutenant and the sheriff can attest to this. Um, there is a policy that they take two officers with the inmate if they go to the hospital. Um, there's also, um, we're on call twenty four seven, um, with that sixty hours. And also, um, a nurse can be at the facility within thirty minutes to assess an inmate. This has happened several times in the past where the officers weren't quite sure what to do. Um, came in, assessed the individual, no, they don't need to go to the hospital, or yes, they most definitely need to go to the hospital. Um, we all know the inmates, we have very high behavioral issues. Couple of weeks ago, I got called in. I came in, we had an individual that had a screw in his leg that he put in there from when he was in a psych, um, psych hospital and he was digging it out. Um, the officers weren't quite sure what to do. I came in, got that under control and he ended up going to the hospital and we took out a two inch screw. Um, as far as cost savings, I know I, there's all sorts of cost savings, but since I've taken over the medical contract, um, the previous company would use McKens, McKesson Medical Supply. That's quite pricey. Now we go to the Dollar Tree, to Walmart, to Meyer, to get medication or not medication, excuse me, creams such that can be purchased at a much less lesser cost. Um, the pharmacy we have now, they use three to four different discount cards to get our medications down. And we have a lot of inmates that are on antibiotics due to teeth issues or other problems. And at the pharmacy that, excuse me, that we're at, those medications or excuse me, those antibiotics are free. So that's a huge saving there as well. Um, we needed to replace our medication cart. To replace the medication cart that I have to accommodate everything that we need, it was going to be sixty five to eighty five hundred dollars. My husband and I on Saturday afternoon went to Home Depot and bought a PVC board. And I went to Walmart and bought two towel racks and those are the handles and our maintenance Chris put this on. So we have been trying to save money um right from the very beginning. Um, I don't feel it's necessary that we spend a large amount of money at a medical supply when you can get the same amount as far as antibiotic creams, triple antibiotic creams, something like that, not medications, but creams. So there's just, this is just for you to look over. Um, one of the things that I want to call your attention to is May twenty fourth of twenty twenty three, this is on the second page. Um, there, um, we never, um, we, when I say we, our physician never allowed Suboxone, Zomsole um in our jail. What that is, is that is a medication um that helps people come off if they have an opiate addiction. Um, the U S Department of Justice guidance related to um access um to non-discrimination for medication on May twenty fourth said that if an individual comes in and they are being seen by a physician or a clinic and they are on these medications, that you must provide this to them. This is extremely time consuming. Once again, you have to go back and you have to get documentation that they're actually receiving this up right up until they come into jail. Um, this can take up to ten minutes per inmate because you have to make sure that that is completely developed. They are segregated, they are taken out of their pod. Um, and this, they can be on it for up to three times a day and they're on it for the length or the period of time that they're at the jail. So there's just some information in here. You'll notice that twenty twenty two seems to have big larger numbers. But that was also um COVID and we did have um two outbreaks of COVID in the jail. So there was a lot of extra, you'll see extra COVID tests. Um, you'll see um sick calls to medical were much higher. Um, and then the inmates on medication for like twenty twenty two is nine sixty. But you have to take in consideration, some of the inmates may be there for ten, twelve, fifteen, sixteen months. So I know that nine sixty or five eighty four doesn't look like a lot, but you know, we have inmates there for a period of time. So once again, I apologize that you didn't have this sooner, but I certainly was not aware of this until last week. And then Lieutenant Howard was talking about transportation officers. On the back page, twenty twenty three, there's been thirty one doctors, dentists, um, inmates taken out for testing. Um, so right there, it's increased. That has to do with, we've had pregnant inmates. Um, we've had one go up to three weeks before term. We've had one there that went up to term. So the amount of time that our transportation officers spend um transporting um can be quite quite lengthy and quite a lot of time. Um, I just feel that this needed to be shared with you, um, especially in the reduction of the correction officers. And then you're adding extra work medical that they're not trained for onto them as well.
I, I appreciate this information. I, I have a question by looking at this. So October twenty twenty one, it was a hundred and fifty nine thousand. Through October twenty twenty three, we're up to a hundred and seventy eight thousand. That's a twenty thousand dollar increase. What's, what are these numbers next to it? They uh.
It's a multiplier for the cost of living and that was part of our contract as the cost of living and it's on page eleven of the.
Okay. So this, this twenty thousand dollar difference is a, is a cost of living in, increase from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three?
Actually, you know what? I'm going to defer to my attorney because he does that and I can't really tell you and I don't want to give you wrong information.
Please.
He's right here.
He's coming. Come on up, sir, so we can all hear you. Thank you for coming. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding this correctly. I appreciate this, this information.
Chairman Day, are you done?
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Any questions?
Unless anybody has any questions for.
Thank you.
Thank you. What do you mean, sir? Fantastic, yourself?
Well, we'll find out later.
Okay.
Um, this issue over the increase uh in annual expenditure is purely related to cost of living. Went to the cost of living indexes, applied the formula that's in the contract. And so from uh the first year where it started out at a hundred and fifty nine thousand, if you take that number, last year, there was an almost ten percent increase in cost of living. I think everybody that even begins to read the newspaper knows that. The actual amount was nine point zero six, we take and multiply last year or this first year's figure by one point oh nine oh six. And it comes out to that uh one seventy three, four seventy. This year uh in October, I mean, just this month, actually, um, the increase was just shy of three percent. And so there's a bigger increase, excuse me, a smaller increase than there was in the preceding year. The math is all there. It just follows right on through. It's nothing that we've added in at all. We do have a potential problem. If you look down at the last couple of lines of that one block there, malpractice insurance has gone out of sight. Uh, I don't necessarily want to discuss numbers. On the record, the numbers are all there and they're real. Um, from year one, from twenty twenty one to the one that uh we're just, that we got last year, it comes into effect in October. Uh, that increase was almost uh what eight, six thousand dollars. Um, I've got a request into the insurance company and said I needed a new quote for this year's insurance. I called, I talked to them this morning. No, we haven't gotten it back yet. It's not actually, it doesn't cycle until October seventh. But if it's anywhere near that and it's another six or eight thousand dollars, but I hope it's not. This cut which you're offering us is going to impact our ability to pay them. As a consequence, if we lost the malpractice insurance, we wouldn't be able to have the doctor. Uh, that's one of those necessary easels, can't get around it. And correctional malpractice uh took a, started a big jump only uh around twenty twenty and it's been going up there all year. We got caught on that and uh it is what it is.
Questions? I don't have any. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, you're sad.
Oh. Drop my pen. Thank you, sir.
Some meals, but you're looking at the numbers.
I just want to share one more observation. I was listening to the recap that Mr. Delahanti was, was giving us. And I think it, it sounded as if, okay, we have a population in the jail of X. Now the population is lower, so we should be able to reduce the staff by that percentage. That's just not even logical. You just can't do that. It's not a linear kind of thing. We have to maintain enough staff there always any, any time.
Thank you, sir. Thoughts, comments, commissioners, anybody?
Tim, have you had any conversations with time regarding these possible overtime costs and?
Not since we last met, though. I would point out in the draft that you uh received last week, we did have an allotment for the on-call wages that was intended to take care of the transport issue. And that works out to roughly thirty sixty hours per week. Uh, I know, I haven't seen his figures in terms of how much time they spend on transport, but that's actually in the budget now as on-call, which is differentiated from part-time in the collective bargaining agreement. And these uh transport officers on-call clearly called when they're needed, you know, to transport.
So basically staying course the way it is right now?
Uh, I don't know how many they have doing this. I have not seen those numbers of how long they take on these various transports. Uh, so whether it's staying the course, a little less, a little more, I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head. Uh, but it is at least in the budget in the overtime right now. I believe it's sixty five thousand. It's in the budget right now for overtime. I'm not suggesting that, you know, that needs to be used even, but uh I have not been privy to the uh scheduling uh numbers that you've seen here to know just exactly how that works through. But it's not cut completely.
Comments? Budget we have in front of us. A lot of cuts. You guys willing to do that?
We, courts at all.
Pardon me?
Glued it to the courts at all.
Yes, Mr. Delahoney.
Yes, in fact, we even had the district court here, obviously, at the last, you showed us their statistics too. Uh, yeah, all of the different activities we have have been reviewed.
Well, these are statistics and they look like they're on a downward trend. To me, I mean, the blues look stronger than all the others. And blue is twenty twenty three.
Hold on, let her finish.
This was the last time. So. And with, with, with less cases. And my understanding is the last time, there was a magistrate that was uh hired by Judge Noble was because of all the all the um tickets that were going through. But even when the tickets go through, all they go and do is both of them don't pay for it. And then if they don't pay for it, then it has to go through the prosecutor. And then if they don't pay for it, then it has to go through the prosecutor's office. And they, they don't have any more help and they do all the paperwork. I mean, even with the courts on appeals, the courts here have nothing to do with appeals. Uh, except, you know, front of the court of, of appeals and it's either denied or not. And the attorney can go to the Supreme Court and then it's on our prosecuting attorney.
All the courts have full-on appeals. All of them do.
I know, but what I'm saying is the paperwork ends up in the prosecutor's office to process all that.
No, no. Okay, you guys want to, she's got some questions, come on up. You have some questions, Brad?
Yes, I do.
Come on up, guys. Did you have a comment first, Commissioner Wiltie?
I was just gonna say Judge Beebe was able to be here tonight.
She is here.
Come on up, guys. Thanks for coming.
Yes, you're welcome. Happy to be here because the misinformation that is provided just by being shot out like, like it's knowledge is disturbing to me. I watched the, I was on vacation, so I apologize I couldn't be here at the last meeting. I would have probably made a point of either canceling my vacation or at least being online if I had known that my court was being attacked um without any previous knowledge that it was even a concern. The under, the, one thing I want to make sure that we understand here about the magistrates because Commissioner Simmons, you have three magistrates, you have three magistrates, you have three magistrates. I don't even think she clearly even understands what a magistrate does. But we don't have three magistrates. We have a probation officer who also does magistrate duties. We have a traffic clerk who also does magistrate duties. We have a court recorder slash deputy administrator who also does magistrate duties. They're not magistrates. So that is
Hold on, let her finish.
That is part of their duties and that is because of their other roles. If they're, if Miss, if Allison is uh doing probation duties, whether that's going through the sentencing's, um, pre-sentence investigation reports, whatever needs to be done for that, she can't do magistrate duties, so I have to have another magistrate that can swear to warrants. I have to have another magistrate who, my other magistrate's a court recorder, so she's in the court with me. So they have to be somebody available to swear to warrants whenever an officer comes in and he's a warrant swear to. These are also individuals with their magistrate duties that are on-call twenty-four seven. When they're reached to be on-call, that's a magistrate duty. So they're not magistrates. Only, that is a part of their duty to make sure that our court provides the services that are needed. We have to be, have somebody available twenty-four seven, always.
I think.
And, and the thing is this, she apparently really likes the prosecutor's office because she wants to talk about them. But the problem is, I was a prosecutor. They don't do half the stuff that you're saying that they're responsible for. And that's, and that's a concern to me. If you don't understand what the court is, come on up. Nobody has come up to ask me about how the court runs, how my staff is utilized. This is a bare minimum staff. You talk about a new employee? There was never a new employee. When there was cuts, district court was cut, two thousand sixteen, they lost an employee, just like everybody else. They lost an employee in two thousand sixteen. She ended up going, it was Lindsay. For those of you who knew Lindsay, it was Lindsay. She was in district court. Thankfully, the lady in, I think, circuit court, right, retired? So Lindsay went up to the circuit court position that Casey now has. So they have cut. They are behind already an employee. That's why Tim, who understands a little bit more about how the court is processing, what we're dealing with right now, understands that there should be no cuts. You are in control of my budget, but your job also is to make sure that I have a budget to run the court to do the job that needs to be done in that court. And the, that magistrate position, that's, you can't have a magistrate and expect them to do all the duties of a magistrate, be on-call twenty-four seven every day of the week, for every daily year and think that that's going to work. It doesn't work. These are all positions that are necessary positions that also are nice enough to also do magistrate positions because that's not fun. That's swearing to warrants at three o'clock in the morning because there's a blood draw. That's making sure that you're available. If an officer stops into the office, stop whatever you're doing to swear to a warrant. Because yes, criminal charges start in the prosecutor's office, but they all come to my court and they have to be sworn to by a magistrate. And if a magistrate doesn't find proper cause, guess what? Nothing happens there. Also, that doesn't include all the other stuff that we're responsible for. It has nothing to do with the prosecutor's office. They don't handle the appeals for, the courts handle appeals. They respond to their appeals for sentencing's and things like that. Yes, that's their duty, but they don't handle all appeals. And they don't deal with civil stuff, civil infractions unless it goes to a formal hearing, but magistrates also do informal hearings. That's who holds those. You also have a judge who's only here half-time every other day. So if I'm not here, I have to have a magistrate that goes, does my arraignments for people who are large. So if my magistrate that is also the court recorder is recording, she can't be the magistrate that is doing the arraignment, so it takes another magistrate. So you have to understand that. It's not three magistrates. It's other positions that also do magistrate duties. We have worked hard. You know, Danielle, thankfully, pardon me, this upsets me because I came in here to a mess in January. That I into, I had, had made changes and tried to do things that are going to be right. I've had to ask for an audit to try to see what financially is going on. I've done everything. I kind of tried to make sure that this is done effectively, efficiently, legally, correctly. And thankfully, was able to bring Danielle, who is an administrator that does such a good job that I've had the, when she had our audit two years ago, the audit said it was the best audit they've ever had in their entire life of doing audits because she's prepared, knows her stuff. And I appreciate that. And thankfully, I've been able to bring her over part-time to try to help in the situation that's going on here. And with, and she has worked hard even to look at our budget to say, hey, what can we do? She's made cuts into our budget. In fact, worked with our, I let her talk about what she's talked with our project, um, our management system because we are combined with Ross Common with our management system. And, but they were charging both, double. So she got a hold of them and said, this is not right. We are now part of the same, um, they did a change, what?
Two, twenty twenty, they joined our server in Ross Common and um they agreed that as long as the judge was going to be, you know, operating the same in both counties that they would reevaluate uh two separate invoices and, and combine them. So it was cost savings of ten thousand dollars.
So because what they said, because the, with the prior system way it was in place, the, the administrative was so different that they had to charge separately because there was so much extra work they were having to do. But they said if I was going to be the judge and they knew how on board I am with everything. And the good thing that you have right now is you have a judge who came up from the system. I worked in the district court. I understand the system. I understand the court process. So I understand even, I'm working on the set aside stuff because I know how to do it. Most judges would not know how to do that. They would not know the system. So I'm saving money there because nobody's having to work overtime to take care of all the set aside stuff. So my point is none, nobody understands the court system apparently and nobody's asked. And we've done what we can to cut. If you cut our budget, our cut, our budget is necessary and it's reasonable, which is why Tim's not asked any cuts from our budget. Because he understands that we're already doing everything we can with the bare minimum staff. The only reason I asked for that lean tech position was because we're using that money already to pay nine-one-one out of our budget. I was trying to do something that is, again, something that should be already in the court and protect our liability going forward. It's not like I think, oh, cut the sheriff's department because I don't like that either and give me a new person. It's not that I want a new person. It's that we've had a lot of issues with the way things are going now. And we already are paying that to nine-one-one. So that's why when I, I had heard a lot of people saying, I can't believe she wants to hire a new person when we're making cuts. That's not the point. Again, I'm trying to save the money, save the county money that's being spent already um for something that has to, has to happen. We have to have lean. We have to put warrants in. We have to remove warrants. We have to put conditions in. But again, Danielle made a cut there with, you know, with, with that and we are doing our part. But your job, yes, is my budget. Your job's not to run my office, but it is my budget. But your job also, you have a statutory requirement to give me a budget that I can use that is going to be effective.
We, we do, we do. And I think any department right now feels targeted, especially when it's brought up. Um, this is an extremely difficult, extremely difficult. I don't think my job is to, to know how you guys operate. That's your guys' job. Um, the last thing we should be doing is micromanaging. Obviously, some conversation was brought up. Wasn't obviously all correct, which happens quite frequently as, as we are all well aware. Um, we're some departments felt like they were being targeted. Yes, the courts got brought up. Yes, it was discussed. She gave us some, some very good information. Um, I am glad you're here tonight. I'm glad you're clarifying. Unfortunately, anything we talk about cutting right now, people are feeling um targeted, I guess. I, 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 we're looking for anything, cutting jobs.
And I did it. And I, and, and I appreciate and I feel for the job, the situation that you guys are in right now. And that's where I think, and you're right. I mean, I don't want you to micromanage people's offices. I don't expect you to come in. You can't come in and run my office.
I won't understand it. Even if I come up and ask it, it means nothing to me.
That if you're going to be making comments like it's, like it's gold, then you should know that it's not. I mean, I don't think, I would not come in here and just start saying what your job is and what you guys do when I have no clue on that. And that's where my problem was. It's, isn't, is, is saying something without having any understanding, where that could have been an easy question to come and ask. How do the magistrates work? You know, because that's clearly not their position. That's just another one of their responsibilities. Um, so hopefully that helps those who don't understand what a magistrate does.
No, you're fine.
So, but you know, I, having a better prosecutor understands the prosecutor too, and I don't think that they deserve to be having any cuts either. And I'm not saying that they're, but I just want to make sure you understand that not everything goes through the prosecutor's office. That's not how it works. Warrants don't go through the prosecutor's office when somebody fails to appear. They don't do that. I, I don't understand where that came from, but they don't do that.
I said as much as I know about the courts, was this a lot as you can, okay? But I also heard that you were going to be here tonight and I, everybody had to hear it. So I guess I provoked you into coming forward. I didn't mean to provoke you. I don't mean to attack you.
I don't want to tell you what to do either.
I don't think it was facts. I think it was conversation, but, but some things that were said did seem factual. So she, she's, she's definitely, she's definitely cleared some things up. So that's appreciated.
If you have any other questions about what's the, what is being done or in the court? And even, and the thing is too, you know, is that we are not set up to be a collection and, you know, a moneymaker. That's not what the courts are supposed to do, but you all know that we make the most money with the courts, other courts. Um, and because we do get the traffic. And, you know, we did go through, just so you guys know too, just to give you a little bit more information because I know that um Commissioner Wiltie was asking about the um money for the civil infractions and that type of thing. And I appreciate reaching out for that. I did re-look at that in July. Um, again, wanting my two courts to be somewhat similar in those things. We um increased the speeding tickets to a point. Um, we are also still bound by scale and third vice of what is reasonable fines and costs. Um, so we had to address that. So we increased those places that we can increase. Um, I want you to know how hard my office is working because I have been really pushing collections, um, trying to get people who owe money held accountable for that, bringing them in. I'm making myself available more to make sure that um they see me if it's necessary because sometimes seeing a judge is helpful. But I mean, we're doing all of that. We, our collection rate as of June thirtieth um for outstanding civil infractions was ninety-five point four percent. Um, outstanding misdemeanor traffic and drunk driving, eighty-nine point two percent. Um, combined total for all of our stuff, eighty-seven point two percent. So I mean, we are working hard to collect what we can. Um, but that's not our priority. So if making cuts in the court, that's one thing that's going to stop. Um, because I won't have the staff to do collections because it's not the biggest priority. Making sure people's rights are not violated, making sure that we're covering all the other statutory requirements that we have. That's my priority.
Questions, comments?
The three magistrates you got, they're not magistrates. What's your pay scale?
They're, that's all through their contract. They're all union. Um, so that, that's at their union level, whatever year that they've worked, how long they've been here. And, you know, that's how that works.
Okay, so it makes no difference whether they're doing magistrate duties or their other duties. They get paid the same.
They get paid the same. Yes. And in fact, they don't get, their salary includes, I think they were given, moved up a lot or given a little bit of an increase because of their magistrate duties because they don't get on-call pay.
Right. So they're getting a higher pay all the time.
A little bit, yes, a little bit higher pay, but that's because they get no on-call pay. So when they're on-call all night, all day, they get no extra money. So it was included in that as part of being that magistrate dude. But it's all part of their contract.
Good question.
Yes, it is a very good question. Thank you.
I just got something to say.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wiltie.
I think Commissioner David explained it well. I mean, these are very hard times. We're cutting jobs. You know, we're looking at everything.
Yeah, I get that.
I know since you've been here, I've heard great things about what you're doing and I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that Danielle's been here almost all of our meetings for budget. I know you guys are taking this very seriously. Um, I appreciate that. Um, and you know, hearing from you that you are lean-staffed. And, and I believe you. So um, I just, I support you guys and keep, keep working hard.
We will, and we, and we support everybody. We don't want to see any cuts either. It's very heartening to hear about that. And like I said, I don't, I don't envy you or even know, you know, I try not to come here either because it's not my job to do your job. So, you know, but I, I
You can have this job.
And I think, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that too, but I just, like I said, I just struggled with making sure that everybody understood, especially some of you newer um commissioners that I know might not understand the court at all. Um, what those recent liabilities are and how um important that, you know, we have those magistrate to swear to those warrants and things because they're swearing to warrants that you guys are going to think about, you know, searching phone, searching, you know, Snapchat. You know, searching all these things that they have to swear to those warrants with those officers, make sure that they're done properly and people's rights aren't being violated. Um, so their jobs are important. Their positions are important. So, but thank you. Any other questions for?
The only option we have in front of us is, is cutting.
So this is not a So um I noticed when I was going through claims last, last time about all the all the funds we're paying out in mileage and from Ross Common to here. And so far it's been about, that I've seen on my, on my watch, about twelve hundred dollars. So that tells me for two months, so six months, about seven, seventy-two hundred dollars a year, which I think is a lot. And I, and I look at that, I look at that and I'm thinking, well, can, can, can we sustain this? Because we're so short of funds.
Hang on, let her finish. Are you done with your question?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I can speak on that. I can tell you that um if and when, I'm not gonna say if, when the Ogumon District Court is finally completely electronic, uh, there won't be a need for me to come here every single day to review ledger books that are written with pencil. Right now, they're the last court in the state of Michigan that has absolutely zero electronic accounting records. So I go through boxes and boxes, which, I mean, the, I, I can't haul the, I mean, I wouldn't want to leave the court with your accounting, right? So that's why I'm physically stuck coming in here to work on this job. Now, when that gets cleaned up.
Do you have any idea how long that might be?
They, they just had to extend our audit. That's why I'm thinking.
I know you walked into a mess. I know you did.
Extend our audit because of the issues that they're finding. So I don't know how long it'll be. Right now, Danielle's going in on a temporary basis to help us out. So that we can not only get our financial stuff taken care of, get into where we have this management system that it would be so easy to push a button and tell you everything for the month. Instead, we're going through, like she said, all these handwritten, trying to figure out where things were, why voids were made, why this was done. But it's temporary. But the thing is too, her money currently for her transportation is coming out of a budget I already had correct, Tim, for that position for administrator. So I mean, we're saving money in our budget right now.
Okay.
And eventually I'm going to have to have a, an administrator, you know, here full-time again, running the office correctly. But that, that office has to be trained how to do things correctly because they've been trained to do it wrong in many ways.
And can't do it until this message brings it up.
Yes, because right now my focus with Danielle is to make sure that the audit is done correctly. Make sure that we know what we have to fix, get that fixed, get our financials, you know, bank accounts, all those other things. The treasurer can tell you, I've been working with her and Danielle's been working with her, trying to get even the credit card you questioned was because there was already two credit cards with over there. You guys, they had nothing to do with the county. I, I want one credit card to go through the county like everybody else and I and it's like, well, what if they're going to spend it on Ross Common? Well, okay, no, no, thank you. I already got a Ross Common credit card.
We still gotta ask questions.
Right. The thing is though, that, that would have been something that would have, probably should have, even if Tim would have been asked about it. He, he knew why we were trying to go through the treasurer's office. You know, it, but instead of making it sound like we may be doing something wrong, questioning that is helpful. But I'm just saying to you, everything that I have done since I've worked in this office, everything that she's done helping has been to try to help this county be more efficient and effective in my office. Um, and, and that's what I'll continue to do. No, you know, no matter what. Um, but we both have obligations. So I, I get that. The courts have to be funded. That's your requirement as well.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
I just, I got one thing to add.
Go ahead.
Not, not to that. Um. Not, not to that. Um, obviously, this is a really tough situation that we're all in. And I think, obviously, we're, you know, jobs are gonna be cut, but even with us having to cut jobs, I mean, another thing that we do have to think about, and I'm going back to like the EDC, and I understand even if not, you know, no full, full amount or whatever, but as bad as it is that we have to cut jobs, I mean, the other side of it is, we still do need to keep the throttle down on trying to grow the county. Trying to bring business to the county. I mean, Phil made it very clear, we all know, new employees move to the county, their families, that increases our tax rate. I really wish you guys would at least give a little thought, at least trying to keep the EDC on the ledger. Um, again, I know these are tough times, but there's no reason for us to not continue in trying to keep the momentum of the EDC going, and they clearly are making some big strides. And I think they're gonna continue to go that route. And Phil's claim tonight brings up a real good point. You're asking townships to support us, EDC, when the county's not even supporting them. I really wish you guys could at least give some thought to at least some support to the EDC.
Thank you. By looking at this, I guess I want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, and I want to repeat this. This, the, the cuts we're looking at is five correction officers and three lowest seniority deputies, so that's eight people.
Right.
Total.
Well, you kind of, your part-time have to leave too, right?
Well, part-time has to leave too, um, but as I pointed out at the last meeting, we, in the contracts have, uh, language, one that affects corrections, it goes to not part-time, but on-call. That's where your transport officers are. In the, uh, things like Warby, Marine, and so on, those are in the contract considered temporary seasonal positions. But not subject to that. There is one part-time officer, one regular part-time officer that's in the sheriff's office that yes, have to be reduced as well. So, it, it, you're eight and a half FTEs.
Wonder if, uh, wonder if there's a continuation from last year. What does that mean?
Continuation is typically one-twelfth of the year's budget, meaning you continue thirty days. Uh, and then everything is, remains as is for that thirty-day period. Or, you know, if you did sixty days, you know, then it would be two months' work that you'd be continuing. Keeping in mind, if that happens, that you're, you're delaying, you know, if we do or unable to find any other um, revenue or places to reduce our expenditures, expenses.
We're going further than the whole.
Continued this scenario for another thirty days, which is gonna impact what you're gonna have to do for the next eleven months.
Are we sure that we've exhausted all other options?
I have no other revenue sources to go to. Uh, the reductions that, uh, between what was originally proposed and what you've done here, I, I don't believe you can go any farther, uh, with the reductions. Without, in effect, uh, canceling, if you will, whole activities. Now, a lot of activities you can't cancel because they're statutory. We have to maintain the minimum of, uh, serviceable levels. Uh, while that's an elusive number, uh, I would submit that, you know, their officers are already at that point.
This has got Kelly's position off of that too, correct? I, I guess I, how, how did, how do we get to cutting eight jobs? Uh, uh, it just blows my mind.
Can I make a comment there?
Please.
Being only a commissioner for eight or nine months, I, I've heard you say that comment a number of times. I've heard Commissioner Simmons make that comment. And it's just so hard for me to grasp that comment when you guys have put five hundred thousand dollars a year of ARPA money onto a budget. The first time you even thought about doing that, the first thing that should pop in your head, this is not sustainable, we have to make hard decisions now. And I understand their heart, but you've just continued to kick the can down the road. And you guys keep saying, I don't understand how we got there. A lot of people wanna put the blame, put the blame on Tim Dalhoney. I mean, you know, I mean, it's just really hard for me to, to, to fathom that when, when you guys keep saying that.
I asked a question.
It's been there for a while.
Cutting eight jobs hasn't been here since I've been, this is my third time, third term. So no, no, I don't agree with that statement. There's also five hundred thousand dollars to balance next year's budget. So.
And that's already been.
And you've been sitting here with, making the same, same decisions with us since January one. That's part of the reason why we're, we're here. I mean, we're looking from October to January, is the only time that you weren't here, sitting here with us, making these same tough decisions.
Right, I understand, but I'm saying, three years ago, when you're making these decisions, I mean, I'm sure that the, the thought process at that time was you maybe need to cut jobs.
This is the worst.
Wanted to do that.
I'm sorry.
Nobody wanted to do that, so we just kept kicking the can down the road, putting these ARPA, ARPA money onto the budget.
I won't disagree with you, but I'm gonna respond to that, I guess, a little bit, is we, we were told this is the worst budget that's ever been seen. We were told that directly twice by the treasurer. So this is the worst budget that, that, that has been seen.
I, I understand, but if we know revenues are continuing to decrease, and we're using outside funds to try to make our balance right, how, how do you think the next year, you think, this, it's not magically gonna fix itself? The only way it fixes itself is you gotta stop the bleeding. It's the only way.
I don't disagree with that. You know what? One or two positions, eight positions? Holy smokes, that's with five hundred thousand dollars last year, this year, and next year.
It's a bad deal.
But we've approved a lot of things since January one. A lot of things, that is part of the reason we're sitting here in this position. So I don't feel like maybe all of the information, I, I don't know, I guess, uh, I don't, I don't know. Commissioner Simmons, go ahead.
This hasn't happened just in the last three years. This has probably happened in the last, and Mr. Scott, Commissioner Scott knows this, it's been going on for years. And the sad part is, some of our revenues have disappeared, such as, um, the revolving fund, the, the money that goes in there now has changed considerably. Uh, it's a, it's not a lot of money anymore. So that's disappeared. Um, the veterans, and, and I don't see anything wrong with this, but I wish the state would back us with, with the money that they're not paying now, is hundred percent disabled veterans don't pay property taxes now. Also, DDAs are taking money, that's money out of our coffers too. And, uh, last year, we gave Ogumon Township hundred percent, and they used to have fifty percent. So a lot of money has disappeared. In the last recent years, probably the last six years or so, that we don't have anymore. And, and, and you look at this, um, cost of living has gone absolutely wild. So everybody's wages have gone up, gas has gone up, fuel's gone up, paper's gone up, lights have gone up, gas has gone up, everything's got, you know, propane. Everything's gone up. The only thing that hasn't gone up is how much we take in in taxes. So what we're doing is, we're trying to provide the same services, and I think every service we provide is absolutely essential. And we're trying to pay it with money we don't have, because that money is gone now. And, and I don't know how to crack that, so, I mean, is it a spending problem? Uh, I would say it, we don't have it, we just don't have enough money. Enough money's not coming in. And with, the way the economy's going, and it's gone crazy, even, even my own household, I feel it. How do, how do you resolve that, that issue? But it has been going on for years. It was going on with years, even when we didn't have the economy that we have today. So, and when you talk about EDC, you know, the money that we give the DDAs is, like, we're still putting money in the community through the DDAs. And they're, they're supposed to be attracting businesses and doing, um, things to make our community better. So, I mean, how much, how much money do we push out to townships and, uh, EDCs and stuff? It's got, it has its stuff somewhere. I don't, I don't know how to express it. It's that, there's a lot of money that we don't get anymore, but yet, we had to provide the same services, and we don't have the money to do it. So, something has to go. We could give up our wages, every seventy thousand dollars.
Nobody else gives up their wages.
Huh?
Nobody else gives up their wages.
So.
We don't cut anybody's wages.
I understand that. I just made a comment.
Okay.
Don't get up.
I won't get up.
Any other comments, commissioners? I guess I just want to verify that every, every, uh, other option, every, all options have been exhausted. You know, making these cuts and then wonder if, if the state does come in and say, I, I, they, they, they couldn't be made, I, I, I. I, I, and we don't have a timeframe of when that's gonna happen. I, I, there's a lot of what-ifs here, there's a lot of maybes. I, I agree, we gotta do something. Um.
I've been here seven years, like Commissioner Simmons said. I can remember, I've been, we've been in the red every year that we came to this point. We've been promised that out, out-of-county inmates was gonna, was gonna save our souls. We were promised that cars on the freeway was gonna print, save our souls. We stole money out of the tax revolving fund to save our souls. And every year, we kept going a little bit deeper, because we'd take, we'd take, we'd take four shovels out of the hole and throw three back in. But that fourth shovel hole is going deeper, and we keep going deeper. And I've seen the numbers every year, and they're in the red, for somebody to say that they've been here and have, are surprised. I'm surprised you say that, because it's there, it's on the books, you can see it. And now we got a, a system, it's BSNA, we can see our, our numbers right away. Uh, the treasurer will tell you, when I, uh, the first day I stepped in the county building, I asked for the numbers for that day. And I was told I couldn't get them, because they didn't do that kind of thing. We didn't know our end numbers until March, when the audit came on. Then we were all surprised. Oh, what do you mean? We're, we owe some money. You know, people are doing their jobs here. I'm not, I'm not gonna say they weren't doing their jobs.
They are.
But, you know, it just expenses, the cost of doing business has gone higher. We're not in a, we're not in a private industry. We can't start a new product line to start making more money. We can't offer a new service to, to generate more money. We get X amount of dollars. And that's what we have to spend. Now, there's statutory things that we have to do. And then there's non-statutory things. Uh, you know, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody or pick on a department. You know, I kinda, I kinda got hit, hit kinda hard the first year when I was here. And I said, I don't need to know people's names, and of course, all that, that totally went away. Because the first thing that somebody wants to do is come to a commissioner and make it personal. You're gonna, you're gonna lay off my wife or my husband or something like that. Well, I've been in business a long time, and I've been in management, and I've had to send people home. And it's not something you enjoy to do, but it's something you do. Um, when, when, when the, when the thing comes. Do, do, is a department gonna protect their kingdom? Yeah, yeah, they're gonna protect their kingdom. I was in charge of, uh, in charge of something, uh, you know, for a big company. And I did everything I had to protect my kingdom, but when it all came down to it, I had to, I had to sing the company song, and we had to do what we were supposed to do. You know, I mean, is Chicken Little gonna come? Yeah, Chicken Little comes every time. I mean, every time we talk about a guy. The steelworkers have taken a cut many times down there in, in, in the court teamsters do. The county building is taking cuts time and time again. And we tried to help them as best we could with, with contract negotiations last time. Uh, we, I think the insurance was a great thing, and there's things like that. Uh, we just can't give out tons of money. And I talked about this thirty-five hour thing and the, and the, what it looks like to, uh, what a job looks like now in Minnesota. This is a culture that's been going on for a long time. Now, the sheriff's office, they have not had a full-time deputy laid off for thirty-two years now, thirty-one years. Something like that. After Headley failed, all the part-time left. As you can see, part-timer back. You know, they migrated back somehow, some way. Their office is non-statutory. Court system is. Clerk's office, treasurer's office, registered deeds, all the way down, all, all those offices. The state says, the county, you have, you collect tax money, you have to do this. You know, live within that parameter. I, in two thousand eighteen, I came up with an idea. I said, we could put on a road patrol millage. And the sheriff at, at that time asked me, he says, Craig, is this replacement money or is it supplemental money? And I says, it has to be replacement money. We have to replace your money, your general fund dollars with a millage. Audit won't pass, we don't wanna do it. The sheriff looked at me and says, we don't wanna do it. And, and Bruce Reed was sitting in your chair at that time, and he says, Greg, sheriff don't want it, then why would we do it? Okay, fine. So we didn't do it. Twenty twenty came, we put it on. The commissioners at that time said, no, we don't wanna replace it, we wanna give them more. How he was able to do night patrol with the number of, of it he, he had, he stopped night patrol.
Yes, he did.
Commissioners did not. We didn't ask them to, we didn't tell them to. He stopped night patrol, and for whatever reason he did it, I don't care, but he did it. But we didn't reduce the number of deputies. They were able to operate. We got this millage passed, and at that time, the sheriff now, he even came to me and said, Craig, I really don't like this millage. Question, I don't know why you're really putting it on. Well, he goes, it's gonna pass. I know it'll pass, I believe it'll pass, and guess what? It passed. But we did not use it to, to supplement, to replace the money. At that point, that would have gave us almost a million-dollar replacement. We wouldn't be in this boat right now if we had done that. But we chose not, the commission chose not to do that. We added more deputies on, we bought more cars. And then we went, we're, went down another path of spending. We spent more. We had an opportunity to save some money and put it back in the general fund. We did not do that at that time. So I don't feel guilty, because I had a good plan, I think would have worked. And that's where I feel I, I'm at.
That's fair.
But I know that we've been in the red every year, and we borrowed from Peter, I don't know how many times, to pay Paul. Well, Peter moved. Matter of fact, Peter went broke and filed bankruptcy. And he's moved. We can't steal from Peter or borrow from Peter anymore.
My que, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
My question is, are you guys, a commissioner sitting up here, are you guys ready to approve this budget? Yes or no? Go ahead.
Uh, these cuts this year will solve the issue this year. But I foresee more cuts coming next year, so we can balance the budget the following year. These will not be the only cuts that I see coming.
Well, if, if I may.
Go ahead.
When protecting your kingdom, it's gonna be, if, 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 if I had some, if I had a kingdom here that I had to protect, I think I'd make sure costs went up to prove that those commissioners cut me the wrong way.
Again.
Okay?
Yep.
If that means going out and arresting more people to make sure I got more people in the jail? Okay, is that cynical? Is that conspiracy thinking? Okay, maybe it is. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't doubt it.
I'm just saying, with things the way they are right now, with, with revenues coming in.
I, I think going forward, I think we do need to do a three-year projection exactly. I think we need to do what we talked about, is having a budget, uh, committee with two. I, I think going forward, I think we do need to do a three-year projection exactly. I think we need to do what we talked about, is having a budget uh, committee with two commissioners on it. Um, I guess my question is, again, I'm gonna ask each one of you, are you guys ready to approve? We could sit here and discuss this, what we should've did, what we could've did. We need to know what we're going to do, and then we need to move forward. Are you guys ready to approve this budget as, as is? Commissioner Wolsey?
I mean, we gotta, we gotta start somewhere. It's gotta happen.
Commissioner Simmons?
We're not gonna get any more money. So what are our options?
I asked you the question. Are you okay with what's presented to us tonight?
Am I okay with it?
Yes.
No, but I don't know what else we can do.
Okay, so what would you like to do between now and Thursday?
I'd like to have a lot more money.
Buy a lottery.
Not gonna have.
Buy a lottery ticket and donate it.
Please answer the question.
I don't know what other, what other route we have.
Commissioner Mahu?
The only game in town right now.
Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
I don't. And we'll say, just kind of in response to the Commissioner Wolsey's question. Uh, one thing that's board did do three years ago was made the commitment to wean ourselves off from that um, uh, tax funds, so that we weren't, it just wasn't sustainable, it was not a sustainable model. Uh, and I think that was a very good decision despite the pain we're feeling here tonight. Uh, it, it simply was not sustainable. At some point, it would run out. At some point, the treasurer could not settle them with locals and would end up costing even more money. Uh, when I first got here, I think that first budget, when we went through with the audit, was close to a million dollars that we had taken out of there. Way more than what was even the average for prior years. And the auditor pointed out that year, I believe it was something around, gosh, I don't know, in the neighborhood of thousand or so per year that we could sustainably remove. Well, we also knew that that property tax case was going on, and so that was gonna play into, you know, other resources, but we're not gonna be available moving into the future. So I think, um, despite, again, what we're feeling here tonight, that still was a good move. I think it put us, if you believe it, actually in a better position tonight than had we not done it. Uh, because then next year would have looked very bad. Uh, you're probably getting into some of the core services if, if that hadn't been done. That was significant. There have been some other uh, maneuvering that we've done, using commissary funds uh, for a lot of our day-to-day activities at the jail, which is what that money is for. Uh, and it's not just sitting now in a fund and accumulating, it's being put to work. So I believe, you know, some of the decisions that we've made over the last few years have been in the best interest of the county, despite what we're feeling here tonight. Uh, and so I can, I can only, in that case, is just recommend staying the course, which clearly this budget does. That's it. What Commissioner Simmons said is absolutely right. There's just no more revenue source for us to go to. Uh, as far as the expenditures, I cannot in good conscience recommend cutting anywhere else uh, right now. Uh, I do feel badly if the EDC is reduced, um, you know, to zero, but I, I just don't have another answer.
I'm not comfortable with this. I think that we got enough of this that are, I I'm not comfortable with this, uh. And the reason I I say this is, 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 yeah, I could go around to each department and and ask them what they do. I I don't feel like that's my job. Um, I think there's department heads, I think there's elected officials that that know what they need, know what they don't need. I I I just hope with these decisions that are gonna be made here in the next couple of days, um, that all, everything has been looked at, everything has been dug through, every place that could be cut has been cut. Whether it's doing our own things that that maybe we're paying somebody else to do, or, um. I, 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 I don't feel like it's our job to micromanage. They know what their job is. Um, I just hope with us eliminating positions, that that everybody, every department has done their due diligence to cut every penny that they could possibly cut, and I can't answer that, it's not my job to answer that. It's their job. For them to know what they can work with and what they can't work with, um. Was I expecting a, a one or two jobs? Maybe yes. Um, was I expecting eight jobs? Um, no, and and yes, there's gonna be more in the, in the next two to three years. We, we're gonna lose another five hundred thousand dollar revenue. Um, not next year, the year after. That, that, that's, do I, did I, do I agree that some cuts need to be hit made? Absolutely. Was I anticipating this? Not to this extent. Again, I hope everybody, everybody did their due diligence to cut where they could. Cause we don't have a choice. No. So. Are you sure? Yeah, come on up.
I just have a statement. I just wanna make it, I'm gonna say this, Greg. Not to argue with you, but I'm gonna make a statement. You said that I didn't support that millage. You're wrong. Uh, back in two thousand sixteen, night shift was desolate. There was uh, three deputies laid off. Two full-time deputies moved to transport forty hours a week, and all the part-time were gone. The two deputies that was moved to transport was me and Kevin Scott. Not a dollar paid, we did transport. That's exactly what's gonna happen when we lay off. And you're looking at, you're looking at laying off fourteen of my employees. Just so you know, it's not eight, it's fourteen, plus probably marine patrol, we're gonna check into that. That's probably gone too. I'm just saying, last week was a prime example, what's out there. What is out there? What happened here? We had a guy stick a gun at us as we're patrol, as we're chasing him down to get him off the street, so everybody's safe in this community. That's what we're dealing with. And if you don't think we're not dealing with it, look at that right there. There's so much mental health issues in this county that when I, you take three deputies off, off my road, off my rotation, it's not gonna be good. I give you, I gave you a proposal here that I will try this. I will try putting on this interdiction card to, to generate revenue to get drugs off the street. That's where half the problem is, we got drugs on our streets. So if you don't wanna give me that, you explain to the taxpayers why we don't have road patrol when it fails. That's all I wanna say. I don't want no questions.
Thank you, sir. I think we're in a public comment now. Have you guys got any type of public comment? In a respectful manner, come on up, you have three minutes.
I'm pretty loud.
Come on up.
My name's Vicki Barnes. For any of you guys who don't know, I'm an RN. I work for TMB Correctional Services over at the jail. I have, um, a couple different comments. Commissioner Scott, you said not cutting your wages, cause nobody's getting their wages cut. You're gonna cut medical by fifty thousand dollars or whatever the line item is?
We cut her.
Is that?
Hold on, no, no.
Is that not cutting it? Okay, um. The other thing is, there was an opportunity to make money at the jail with inmates from Calcasas County and Gladland, Gladland County. Both those ideas got shot down, down, and that would've made money for this county. Um, if you cut the medical, which I understand, I was on the school board for eight years. I understand if pie's this big, that's all you have to work with. You guys are in a really tough spot, and I feel bad for you. But I want you to be aware, if you cut medical and they're down to four days a week, that means the corrections officer's duties are going to be increased. How can you cut them too? I just don't understand. It will not be a safe environment at all. If anybody's been at the jail, you know that running three a shift is bare minimum. That's one in intake, one work in the floor, one in the control office. If there's a fight that breaks out, they're screwed. I don't know if I can say that on public forum, but they are. I just, it will not be a safe environment in any shape or form. Um, the ER visits are going to increase because the corrections officers aren't gonna know what to do. Um, tha- that means then, once the ER visit has to happen, then Lieutenant Howard has to call in two officers to go with that person to go there. So you're talking, the cuts are just going to increase the expenses. If you need to really look line by line at that, you need to take that into consideration. Because every time somebody goes to the hospital or goes to an appointment, that's overtime hours. So I just, I want you guys to take, I, like I said, I feel sorry for you guys, cause your pie's only this big, and you have to do with what you have to do, but there's lots of things I think that you need to take into consideration before you start cutting. You need to realize how much more it's gonna cost. So, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up, sir, you got three minutes. You've got three minutes.
Um, there was revenue when I went looking through things to change, changing the increase in the E C price by two bucks. If we had the same sale as last year, we'd increase it thirty-one thousand eight sixty-two. The pop rate of the descent would only generate about fourteen seventy-two, and I did disstart the work release program, which hasn't been going since two thousand nineteen. The weekend work release in two thousand nineteen brought in sixteen thousand six seventy-three, so it's close to fifty thousand on that.
Now, what were those numbers again, for the e-cigarettes?
Um, thirty-one thousand eight sixty-two. The pop would be fourteen seventy-two. And then the work release back in two thousand nineteen was sixteen thousand six seventy-three. And that is, our, our numbers have actually been going up. Our average daily population.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I do.
Ready? Get it.
I don't need three minutes. Uh, Brett Gildner, Ogumaw County Clerk, I just want to make it known that um, I talked to the Bureau today, and November twenty-first is the filing deadline for the presidential primary, if anybody's gonna put millages on. If it is in February.
November what, please?
Twenty-first. That's the filing deadline. I need the wording by December fifth.
Is it it?
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? You guys ready to reconvene Thursday?
It's a regular meeting.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Hey, motion to adjourn. Seven twelve. Thank you.